Good evening, we'll call the meeting to order, please stand for the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for. Thank you all for coming this evening. First item on the agenda is a moment of silence. Please join me in a moment of silence for Avery Woodcock, a student in the North Syracuse Central School District. Thank you. Presentations, student survey results presented by the Superintendent Student Advisory Council, Ms. Beach.
Good evening. My name is Giorgio Rauda and I will soon be a sophomore at CNS in September. On behalf of the Superintendent Student Advisory Council, I would like to thank all of you for inviting us to discuss the results from the 2018 student survey. The members of the SSAC are students at either of the middle schools, the junior high school and the high school. Each year, the council elects officers to hold roles as co-presidents, vice president and secretary. Congratulations to our new officers, I am confident that we will have a very successful year. The Superintendent Student Advisory Council is a committee of students from around our school that display qualities of leadership, responsibility and determination. The SSAC has worked extremely diligently in putting together the survey, carefully analyzing the results, collaborating as a whole and formulating a presentation to share with you all this evening. A big thank you goes out to our two new graduates who have remained with us in preparation for this evening. I wish you both the best of luck on your new journeys as college students. I would like to thank Mrs. Lori Cook for playing a huge role in assisting the group by gathering and organizing the information we've received from the survey and for her continuous support throughout the process. I would also like to thank Mrs. Annette Speech for guiding us and allowing us to have the opportunity to be involved in giving the student body an outlet to voice their opinions, work together and make new friends while doing so. The survey that we administered consisted of questions that were divided into several categories, including climate, academics, communications, safety, homework, engagement, responsiveness and quality and satisfaction. This past year, 4,098 students from around our district participated in the survey, which is an increase from the year 2016, yet a slight decrease in the number of participants from 2017. To begin our presentation, I would like to introduce Jenna Sherry as she will be demonstrating the category "quality and satisfaction" in our district.
Hi, I'm Jenna Sherry and I will be a senior this upcoming school year. Question thirty-four reads, "Overall, I am satisfied with my school experience." According to the results of this question, seventy-six percent of the student body agrees or strongly agrees that overall they are satisfied with their school experience. It is encouraging to hear that approximately three-quarters of the students district-wide are satisfied with their educational experience. However, we also must remember that one-quarter of the students in this district feel dissatisfied with their overall experience. Even though this may not seem like a lot, that is approximately 1,024 students. It is my hope that after the presentation of the student survey, our district carefully reviews the data, taking every covered category into account to work on getting as many students as possible to feel satisfied with their overall experience in their school career.
My name's Maria Frances Scotty, a sixth grader at Gillette. I'm going to tell you the results of question four in the student survey, "I feel welcome at my school." Eighty-two percent of students feel welcome at their school, I think that's a great start. However, that does leave about one out of five people that doesn't feel welcome at their school. Not feeling welcome at school can affect your education in several ways. First, some people that don't feel welcome might be afraid to ask questions and may not do well on homework and tests because they're confused. Next, they might be shy and not feel comfortable talking to peers in groups and group work. They also may not participate because they don't feel valued and important. There's room for improvement here. Overall, most students feel welcome at their school. Finding ways to increase the percentage of students that feel welcome will benefit schools in the district.
Hello, my name is Riley Koala and I am an incoming sophomore at the high school. I have question number five, "I feel respected by faculty." District-wide, nineteen percent of students did not feel respected by the faculty at their school. When I took a closer look at the data, I noticed that as the grades increase, the amount of students that feel respected decreases. At Gillette, only ten percent of students disagreed or strongly disagreed that the faculty did not respect them. While at the high school, twenty-seven percent of students disagreed or strongly disagreed that they do not feel respected by the faculty. You would expect that as the grade levels increase, students would feel more respected by the faculty because they are coming closer to adulthood and have more responsibility. This data shows that we should focus on the upper grade levels feeling respected by faculty members. I also have question number six, "I feel respected by my peers." Throughout the district, twenty-three percent of students do not feel respected by their peers. Having students not feel respected by their fellow classmates can affect their education by making individuals not feel as connected to their school. Students may also not feel comfortable to raise their hands in class, participate in after-school activities or even express their opinions and interests. We should make an effort to have kids feel more comfortable and respected by their peers, overall enhancing and making a student's education more enjoyable.
Hello, my name is Hayley White and I'm going to be a senior in high school this year.
And I'm Liam Wank and I am a 2018 graduate of the district and I will be attending Lemoine College in the fall. We were given question number seven, "I feel connected in my school." So, connection has many different forms, that can be sports, music, school spirit or even a conversation with a kind teacher or friend. At the end of the school day, what matters most is that students go home feeling appreciated and well-liked. Given the data, it is clear that each building in the district has its own distinct climate. The challenge for the future will be overcoming it.
As students get higher in their education, they are introduced to more opportunities. For example, the high school has numerous opportunities to feel connected, such as clubs, sporting events and spirit weeks compared to the junior high and middle schools. You also come in contact with more teachers and students throughout the school day. When we reviewed the survey results, we expected the percentage of students that agreed with the statement, "I feel connected to my school," to be higher for the high school, although this was not the case. We compared Gillette to the high school. Overall, eighty-three percent of students surveyed at Gillette feel they are connected to their school, whereas only fifty-six percent of kids at the high school feel connected. There may be multiple factors that contribute to this, but we feel it is important that all students feel welcome, feel included and feel connected.
My name is Hannah Boyle and I'm going to be an eighth grader at the junior high. I have question eleven, "I believe that other students in my school are good role models." Role models are important to have in schools, which is why I think it is necessary to address the trend seen at the junior high. A total of seventy percent of students at the junior high disagree on the fact that they are role models at their school. This percentage is higher than any other school in the district, meaning that inappropriate behaviors are being demonstrated at the junior high. In other words, there are students acting out there. The rules in place at the junior high are there to keep structure in order. However, students at the school are in the in-between stage of being a child and young adult. During this chapter of their life, guidance is needed, but it can be hard for students to rise to the expectations of acting like young adults when given an abundance of restrictions and guidelines that limit them and their decision-making abilities. This decision-making process is important to the growth of a student. It is how students learn and prosper to one day become mature young adults. Also, twenty-two percent of students at the school do not feel respected by the staff at the junior high. This may also play a part in the behaviors being exhibited at the junior high, leading many to feel there are no good role models in their school.
Okay, I also did question number six, "I feel comfortable raising my hand to ask a question." Asking questions in a classroom setting is extremely important in the learning process. Without asking questions, students are not able to expand upon what is being taught to further their understanding. Within the district, overall seventy-two percent of students feel comfortable raising their hand to ask a question. Although this seems like a high number, students should be encouraged more to ask questions if it means solidifying the material or expanding upon it. This could be achieved by teachers encouraging and empowering their students when a question is asked and reassuring that there is no such thing as a silly question, but rather helping the questioning student and possibly fellow students around.
Hi, my name's Tracy Rochat, I graduated this June and I'll be attending SU in the fall. So, question twenty-seven states, "I am included in all classroom activities." An overwhelming eighty-seven percent of students agree or strongly agree that they feel included in classroom activities. The response to this question is reassuring and inspiring. This data shows that our teachers are working hard to enforce a welcoming environment in the classroom, one where no student feels left out. Every student deserves to feel valued in the classroom. I believe the response to this question will only continue to become more positive as our whole district works towards a more collaborative and collective learning environment.
Hi again, I will also be presenting question number twenty-eight, which is, "I feel comfortable expressing my interests and opinions in school." A student that isn't comfortable to express themselves will likely not do well with their studies. Connecting to fellow students as well as teachers is often the first step for one to feel comfortable in class. District-wide, sixty-seven percent of students feel free to express their interests and opinions in school, which I personally attribute to teacher-student connections as well as the fostering of friendships.
Question thirty-two states, "I like the after-school activities offered at my school." Eighty percent of students district-wide agreed or strongly agreed to this question. This question demonstrates the vitality of our after-school programs and the connections our students feel to them. This response is positive but has room to grow. I know from my own experience that there are many students who would benefit from additional after-school activities. Students would benefit if given the information on how to start their own club or group and many students would jump at the chance to create clubs that staff could never think of, thus improving the amount of student participation as well as excitement around after-school activities.
I'm Emily Bradley and I'm going into eighth grade at the junior high.
I'm Gianna Ranieri and I'm going to seventh grade at Gillette Road Middle School.
Our question is number fourteen, "I clearly understand what is expected of me as a student academically." Overall, ninety-four percent of students district-wide agree that they clearly understand what is expected of them as a student. More students in the middle school strongly agree with this statement in comparison to students in the junior high and high school.
In my personal experience, teachers clearly explain their grading policy and what is expected of you as a student. Even though this data is very encouraging, we should not only keep up the good work, but the district should continue to work towards achieving its fullest potential, thank you.
My name is Allison Navara, I'm going to sixth grade at Roxborough Road Middle School. Question sixteen is a new question added this year, "Technology enhances my learning." Eighty-three percent of students agree with that.
Since technology today is constantly making advancements as it plays a large role in day-to-day life, it's encouraging that almost eighty-five percent of students find that technology plays a positive role in the school setting. With the district's access to Chromebooks along with rising popularity in Google Classroom and educational games such as Kahoot, I have noticed that more of my teachers incorporate technology into our learning. However, even though the results displayed for this question are encouraging, we must still remember the seventeen percent of students that do not think that technology enhances their learning as our district continues to work towards our goal of one-hundred percent satisfaction.
Hi, my name is Troy Ferguson and I'm going into ninth grade at the junior high school.
My name is Corinne Freesinger, I'll be going into seventh grade at Rox Middle. We had question twenty-five, "My teachers provide information about my grades for me to access online in a timely manner." Twenty-two percent of students district-wide feel that teachers don't provide grades and/or information online.
The most negative results come from the North Syracuse Junior High School, with thirty percent of students saying that their teachers do not provide grades or information in a timely manner during the 2017-2018 school year.
Online gradebook is important for students so they are aware of their grades and know what to do to improve them.
Question number twenty reads, "I feel safe in school." Feeling safe during the school day is a crucial component in allowing students to feel comfortable and therefore focused in a learning environment. According to a survey involving approximately thirty-five thousand middle and high school students across the nation, fifty percent of students nationwide say they do not feel safe in school. Nearly one-third of our students district-wide disagree or strongly disagree that they feel safe in school. At the junior high school however, only sixty-one percent of students agree or strongly agree with the same statement. Since 2016, there has been an increase of nine percent in junior high students who disagree. As you can see, a pleasing eighty-nine percent of students at Gillette Road Middle School agree or strongly agree that they feel safe in school. When compared to Gillette Road, fifteen percent less students at Roxborough Road Middle School feel safe. It is evident that as middle school students in our district transition to the junior high school, they tend to feel less safe than they did prior to becoming a junior high student, which is something that I believe we should all take into careful consideration.
My name is Bryn Esposito and I'm going to be going into sixth grade at Gillette Road Middle School. As safety being everyone's number-one priority anytime, anywhere, the bus is no exception. Question twenty-one reads, "I feel safe on the bus." On average, out of district-wide, seventy-eight percent agreed or strongly agreed to feeling safe on the bus. Seventy-eight percent is good, but that also means twenty-two percent disagree. That's almost one-fourth of the students in the entire district. The high school had seventy-six percent agreed or strongly agreed to feeling safe on the bus. North Syracuse Junior High and Gillette Road Middle School both have eighty-one percent agreed or strongly agreed, which is good, but there's still room to improve. Roxborough Road Middle School however, seventy-four percent agree or strongly agree, but that also means twenty-six percent disagree and that's over one-fourth of all students. And with some changes over time, it can be one-hundred percent.
Hello, my name is Damon Vilnav and I will be a sophomore at the high school. Question twenty-two reads, "I know exactly what to do in an emergency situation." Knowing the procedures of an emergency situation is vital to the safety of each and every one of our students. Although eighty-five percent of students agree with this statement, fifteen percent of our students do not, which has increased from the last two years. I feel that as a district, we need to address this issue and work thoroughly to use all forms of communication to not only let our students, but all of our shareholders know emergency procedures.
Okay, to wrap up our presentation, I would like to give a big thanks to our council for the new members for speaking up and for our head representatives, Vice President DJ, Secretary Riley and my new co-president Giorgio, and our 2018 graduates Tracy and Liam for being such great leaders and being so dedicated to this council. I'd also like to thank Ms. Annette Speech for giving us these amazing opportunities so our voices can be heard and to you all for listening so our voices can be heard as well. We really do appreciate you guys listening to us and does anybody have any questions?
Comments? Let me start with, I know one of the responses was the lack of respect that some people feel both from teachers and their fellow students. Did your survey get anything as to specifically what are their teachers doing or not doing that indicates the lack of respect or what are their fellow students doing or not doing that indicates this?
We did not get specifics for that, that is a goal for next year for our survey is to really pinpoint why that is and why we are getting the results that we are. We have come up with a few ideas, but as of right now, we don't have those results.
So, the same answer would come then about the safety in school and safety on the bus. What, why does somebody not feel safe in school? And I think you'll get a myriad of answers to that quite frankly.
So, there were no comments, it was just a select from the box?
There were comments from each school and we split into groups as well and we reviewed the comments from each school, from CNS, the junior high school, Roxborough and Gillette. And although some of them were highly inappropriate, we did take the reasonable ones into consideration. And they're basically follow-ups on some of their results to the other questions and suggestions as well on what we can change and what we can add such as new clubs, new activities and et cetera.
So, what can you do as a group to, I guess, foster the more involvement of your fellow students in activities? And other than gathering data, what do you see yourselves doing to improve the environment?
So, for the past few years, we have been putting suggestion boxes into multiple locations in our schools. These are for students to insert their questions, comments, concerns, suggestions. We do put that on the announcements so students know about it and we do get lots of comments through that.
Also, we've had the suggestion boxes up, I put mine in the library at the junior high school and then I resorted to putting it into both cafeterias. And a lack of results has brought the group to decide that we're going to try an online suggestion box and see how many results we get from that. Since technology now is easily accessible on Chromebooks in the classroom during study halls, students can easily access the online suggestion box rather than getting up in the cafeteria, going to the library. And we've had advertisements in the morning announcements to advertise our group and who we are, what we do. And we're going to continue doing that to promote us and get a word out there, so.
Do you mean like involvement for the whole school, not even just the council?
Yeah, exactly.
So, I believe even though I'm graduated, I think that our schools, like CNS is just such a huge school that really if there's a game going on, if there's a musical going on, some kids might not even know about it. And personally, I know the announcements have been a big struggle, but it seems like with like the planning block or I'm not sure what it's called, but that might solve that. But definitely I think that the kids need to be more aware of what's actually going on in the school because if they can see their fellow students doing something, then maybe they'll be happier to each other.
Okay, thank you. Else, anybody?
I just want to say what a great job you all did and Annette, you have a bunch of rock stars here, it's obvious. We appreciate your hard work, it's very important what you're doing and I can tell you're learning a lot in the process and I want to thank you all.
Thank you all and good luck.
Did you have a question?
Annette, anything?
I actually did have a question for you. With the safety in the schools, was it other students, do you know, that were making you feel unsafe? Was it outside influence or the fear of outside situations that made you feel unsafe?
I had this question, I believe it would be a combination of both. The way students behave, if they lash out violently or obviously fear from outside influence like you said. But I think we are taking some good steps in solving this issue. At the end of this month, Armor One is coming in to train teachers and I think that's a great, great step that we've taken. And I think we should do more of these training techniques to train teachers and students in emergency situations. And in light of recent events, I think we've all learned that anything can happen nowadays. So, taking these steps, I think, is great for our district and we should continue to do that, so.
And I do want to add that from personal experience, being in the high school for two years this past year, it definitely has shifted because of recent events and it has made students more aware of what's going on and made us question more. So, some of it is a lot of outside influence and I think that's influenced what also happens in the building. So, students are questioning, well, why is this person getting ID'd but why, like, you know what I mean? So, there's a lot more questions, students are becoming more aware and it is within and outside of the school.
So, before all of you sit down, everyone had introduced themselves, but Megan Johnson, I want to thank you for clicking for us and helping out today as well. I am so incredibly, incredibly proud of all of you and before they sit down, I just have to tell you how this came to be. Because when they came into rehearse today, Mrs. Cook said to me, "Did you help them write these? Did you like tell them what to say?" I had no idea, I did not hear or see any of it ahead of time until we practiced today. This group worked twice as hard as any of the groups before. They came in an extra two-hour session to put this together because the first day we met, they decided they wanted to look at trends over the years, statistics between schools. They dove in much deeper and when they came back the second time, they had an idea of the topics they wanted to discuss. They broke into groups by the more senior representatives and again graduates, thank you, being kind of leaders in each of the groups and then the students chose which sections they wanted to work on. And I wandered between the rooms and I was hearing conversations that were similar to the conversations I hear from my graduate students when I teach a graduate course in terms of, they were on Google, they were exchanging information, they helped each other, you did an incredible job, I'm very, very impressed. And I do want to add that your information in your survey results, because this is the group that put the survey together in the first place, three years ago and of course, we've brought new folks on as we've had some go on and graduate. But I do want to add that your voices are being heard and the whole connection and needing to feel connected to school is what drove the idea of changing the schedule at the high school for this coming year with the academic advisement period. So, we will continue to take your thoughts into consideration as we move forward to get to one-hundred percent satisfaction, which is what one of you said. So, thank you and enjoy the rest of your summer and graduates, don't forget about us. You're both going to be locals, so come back and visit, thank you.
Thank you all. Capital Project update, John Ward is here someplace, there he is. Now, I have to say, I think for the last three years, I followed this survey group and that is a tough act to follow. So, good evening, I'm here tonight to give you a Capital Project update, but before I get started after the survey, I'd like to just comment on a couple of things that was brought up during that survey. There was concerns during the safety part, I know the junior high was mentioned. We've taken some action this summer to hopefully alleviate some of those concerns and remedy some of the problems that we've seen over the past few years. We have moved the guard station into the middle of the main entrance, just like the high school. The other thing we're working on currently now is in the boys bathrooms, at least on the north end of this three-story section where they've had most of their restroom issues, let's say. We're going to, we're putting zigzag entrances in, so the doors will come off and it will be similar to the high school where there's no door, you just walk around a series of two walls to get into the bathroom. So, the idea is there that we help to improve some of those situations and maybe remedy some of the issues at least. Now, on to the Capital Project update, the Transportation Fuel Island. Oh, there we go, all right, sorry about that. So, project scope of the Transportation Fuel Island, basically we- Basically, we're installing a new above-ground fuel tanks and fuel islands for the buses just west of the current fuel island, pretty much behind the transportation and food service offices. This included utilities, site work, and everything. The benefit, it's going to improve the security. It is a gated complex. You'll need to use your ID bags to get into the complex through the gate. And you'll also need to use your ID badge to activate the fuel pumps. Again, we can buy fuel at a little better rate. We can buy more fuel. We've increased our fuel storage capacity so that we can purchase fuel at a little cheaper rate. Oh, there we go. Okay. So project timeline, project started approximately June 11th. The fencing underground fuel lines, dispenser sumps, and electrical conduits were put in by June 18th. We set the canopy columns, formed and poured the fuel containment area, which is just basically a pad. You'll see it in pictures later where the truck would come on, park to fuel the tanks. From there, we poured the fuel islands, the dry mats, and prepared for asphalt the week of July 23rd. The asphalt went in a little bit later than August 1st. We wrapped that up just the end of last week. So it was about the third by the time we completed that. Currently, the dispensers have been installed. Conduit and wiring is being pulled now. We have the hoses on the dispensers. The timeline right now is that by the end of this week, we'll have the fuel management system up and running, the pumps up and running, so that when Matt's drivers come back the third week of August, they can get trained. The one downside is the tanks were delayed, as I was telling Mike earlier. For some reason, any project, I don't care if it's a roof project or whatever, when you order ladders, it's the first thing you order, and it's the last thing you get. And that's what we're waiting on for the fuel tanks is the ladder. So that's scheduled to be here the week of the 20th. So the tanks will get in, the canopy will go up. And really, startup after that point is pretty much minimal. We've got the management system up and running. It's just run through, check everything, verify the gauges are correct, and move on. Just a couple pictures. This was early in the project. To your right, this is where we are prepping the site. On the left, you can see the border fencing is in. The brown columns in the middle are the columns for the canopy. That's what the canopy will be attached to. This is the fuel containment area that I spoke of earlier. And here you have the fuel island. So you'll be able to fuel on this side, you'll be able to fuel on this side. And then the tanks will sit right back in here, and you'll actually be able to fuel on that side as well. So we have several different fueling options. Buses sometimes aren't always on the same side, so, and some of the larger vehicles. So it gives us a lot of options to fuel vehicles. So project budget, the total contract was $993,777. Total work completed minus retainage right now is $559,709 and some change. So the balance to completion, including the retainage, is $434,000 and some change. Pretty much, I don't see, we've done two pay apps. We may see one small one for, you know, I would guess if anything, maybe $100,000. The balance of all that is tanks and canopy. That's really what's left now. Just to note, this capital project was approved on October 18, 2016, along with the Bear Road renovation. And it does include a grant, or a SAM grant, for $350,000. So is there any, any questions on the fuel island?
You said they have a pass key to get through?
It's your ID badge, same thing you use to get in the buildings. They are going to be using the existing island, so they won't need that. Those still use their, their two keys. Yep, there's a containment wall around those as well. So everything's contained, all right up to code and regulations. One thing I didn't mention, let me see if I can go back. Over in this area, right about in here, is we are prepping the site for the pavement. We ran into an area, for lack of a better term, the soil was just like quicksand. And we saw that in the soil borings. So LaValle contacted me right when they hit it. We couldn't get compaction in that area. So what we did was we excavated that down. We needed about two, three feet of soil out of there till we hit better soil. Brought in, put some fabric down, brought in some large stone, and then some small stone. Regraded it, got our compaction to the level that we needed. So we're going to see a change order at the end of the project for about $1,500 for that work. But I gave them the go-ahead to do that. There really wasn't much else you can do in that situation. That's the proper way to solve that issue, and it didn't hold the project up.
How's that?
Just the way the soil's laid out there. You've got wetlands not too far. There was just a layer of like, yep, soil, you know, for lack of a better term. Yes, the original pumps, and so will MNO staff. So we will keep those open till at some point we determine not using them. Yep, and so far, you know, the tank, tanks have tested out fine. Everything's doing what it's supposed to, so we'll, sometime in the, in the future. While I was here, I just wanted to give you a quick update on the roofs. As you remember, we did pass a referendum for some roof work. That included Gillette Road Middle School, the high school, junior high, Allen and Bear. I have been getting final approvals from SED on about 50% of these right now. I've gotten one building permit. So I would assume in the next month, month and a half, we'll get the rest of the building permits. And again, we'd look at probably bidding that in a January timeframe to be done next summer. And then Bear Road, the renovation, a few things. We did go for the third-party review. We have got final comments from the third-party reviewers. King &amp; King will have those answers back the week of August 20th. So we're anticipating SED approval somewhere around mid-October. Then we'll start talking with Watchdog, King &amp; King, the board, and everybody, and see if that's a December vote, a January vote. The nice part is if we could get, or bid, I'm sorry.
No, sorry, not vote.
If we can get that out to bid, then we'll do an asbestos as a prime contract. So there's a real possibility that February break, April break, we could go in and do some asbestos removal, especially in that first phase area that we're going to start construction in. We did that at Smith Road, so we basically pulled the tile out of the classroom, sealed the concrete floors, let them work on those for the rest of the year. The nice part about that is one of the things in construction, you're waiting for test results to come back. If they didn't clear, you start holding up construction. The summer, you have 10 weeks to do, you know, 14 weeks of work. So that's critical if we can get that work done.
Back to the fuel island? Part of what we approved?
No. No, that was never, never part of this.
Okay.
We're thinking, right now, I'm going to say, you know, substantial completion preliminary would be September 20. So, you know, that's what we're hoping, the fourth grade moves out one year, moves back in. I will have a timeline. We just put a committee together to kind of look at that stuff. I will have a timeline with Watchdog and King &amp; King here, and kind of solidify that.
And Don are looking over here. We're beginning the conversation about moving the fourth grade potentially a year ahead of time, so that, because we won't have any swing space. When we've done other renovation projects, we've put a new wing on, and then you can, you know, move a hallway or a grade level into that area while you renovate existing space. But we're not adding a wing at Bear Road. So we're going to need to do something creative, such as move the fourth graders to the middle schools, is what we're looking. But we're beginning conversations about the impact and all the steps that that would involve, because that would happen in the fall of '19.
Did we, did we do any more security enhancements this summer, in terms of moving security desks? Was the junior high one done before the end of school year?
I bid Rox Middle. I finally got SED approval, oh God, April. Had figured about $150,000. We bid that in January, $130,000.
Wow.
So right now, what I'm looking at is how can I break that work up and kind of piecemeal it out? My plan, if I can pull it off the end of this summer, once summer school's done, is we have to put one column. So we have to saw cut the floor in that main entrance and put a column in, tie it into the roof, and if I can get that done before school starts, that's.
I was going to say, because we typically do them over breaks, right? You try to do them.
And that'll be the plan. We're going to end up piecemealing it over breaks throughout the year. We'd hope, we gave them till March. We hope that would kind of help that number. And everybody's got work right now, unfortunately.
Yeah, oh yeah.
Don, thank you.
All right, thank you.
You said it. Next item, three comments from the audience. We have nobody who was signed for that. Four, board comments, committees, reports, anything from anybody? Aaron?
I do. I was highly impressed with some training that occurred, I think it was two, it was in between the last meeting and this one. I was looking at the impressive, and with Vision 2022, the condition, emotional learning, and they were directly impacted. Training, so I was really impressed. Also impressed with the PLCs and shifting. Part in it. Kudos and congratulations.
Thank you, Aaron. What else?
No, Connie and I were putting our heads, dates for the policy committee meeting for the school year.
Good.
Not firmed up yet, but we're working on it.
Didn't mention that Mr. Fafaya did text me, and he was stranded by the storm. So he thought he'd get her late, but I'm not betting on it. So, anything else from anybody? Superintendent's comments?
So I just have one comment this evening. I promised to keep everybody informed of the penalty update. We had a little bit of news last week. I received word from the governor's office. They reached out to us requesting additional information, which Mr. Keegan was very instrumental in helping to succinctly, once again, put together why we need full forgiveness on the penalty. And that has been sent in. The information that came to me indicated that once the bill is presented to the governor, he will have 10 days to act on it. So we have not yet received word that he's been presented with this. I'm assuming from various sources that when that happens, we will be notified, and then we can patiently count down the 10 days. But that's where we're at. I do have a contact that has indicated to me that things should be moving along and that we should be optimistically hopeful. So more to follow.
Thank you, Annette. Routine action items. 5A, consideration of approval of the minutes of the regular Board of Education meeting of July 23, 2018. B, consideration of the classification and school placement of disabled students certified by the District Committee on Special Education. C, consideration of classification and placement of preschool disabled students certified by the District Committee on Preschool Special Education. And D, consideration of classification and placement of students in home instruction programs as recommended by the Home Instruction Review Committee. I'll entertain a motion to approve 5A, B, C, and D as a group. Mr. Denofio, Ms. Scanlon, all in favor. Discussion action items. 6A, recommendation to approve the district-wide safety plan. Whoops, I just lost it. I really lost it. There we are. The resolution is to adopt the district-wide school safety plans and building-level emergency response plans as required by amendments of the Commissioner's Regulations, et cetera, et cetera. So the motion would be to approve the resolution. Don, is there anything in there that changed? Any significance? Yeah? Right. No, no changes there to speak of. Okay. Acknowledgement of gifts. Hey, Lockheed Martin. Lockheed Martin has gifted to the North Syracuse Central School District $2,500 to continue the STEM enrichment activities for our students in each of the middle schools. Two, the Keith family has donated to the district early education program, children's books, valued at $100. And three, the North Syracuse Education Foundation has donated five DEX IQ superkits, no idea what those are, valued at $1,649.95, and one VEX IQ Challenge Full Field Perimeter and Tiles, valued at $199.98. They're for the grant winner, DEX IQ After-School Program at the North Syracuse Junior High School. C, a recommendation to abolish a 1.0 FTE Local Area Network Technician and create a 1.0 FTE Software Support Specialist. Comment on that one. Annette, to, Don, yep, yep. D, recommendation to abolish and create part-time FTE teaching positions in world languages. Annette?
I can comment on this, and it was too complicated to put in the heading there. But in essence, we had a full-time French teacher position, had not yet been filled. And we decided we really only needed a .8 for French. But instead of needing a .4 for Spanish, we needed a .6. So it's really a point to trade between the languages.
Annette, zero.
Correct.
And E, surplus of non-marketable equipment. List, we've got something freezer, Victory something or other freezer. So if anybody wants a freezer, oh, you know, might, might be, might be something, you know, for decorative purposes, but not much else. I'll entertain a motion for 6A, B, C, D, and E as a group. Mr. Harrington, Ms. Kruger, all in favor. Personnel, 6A, 7A instructional personnel, 7B support staff personnel, and 7C administrative personnel. Are there any questions? Any?
All the volunteers who we have? Where people that have the right qualifications up to date?
Anything else? A motion to approve 7A, B, C's a group. Mr. Harrington? Ms. McDonald? I'll get to you eventually, I saw the hand come up. All in favor? There we go. And now a motion to go to executive session, which I can't get to. There we go, now I can. Motion to move to executive session, oh boy. For the purpose of receiving an update on two legal matters relative to potential litigation, and to review the employment record of one individual with no action to file. Motion, Mr. Denofio, Ms. Scanlon, all in favor. We'll adjourn to executive session. Thank you all.